Welcome to the Mid-Ohio Valley Public Forum Video Podcast. This podcast features issues of interest to the residents of the Mid-Ohio Valley area, mainly encompassing Wood County, West Virginia, and Washington County, Ohio. Right now, with the coronavirus pandemic, civic life has changed greatly throughout our country.
One of the things that's changed is this is an election year, and candidates cannot campaign the way they normally would. Generally, in normal times, they'd be out there knocking on your door, seeing you at ice cream socials and county fairs and all those other places that candidates go, shaking hands, kissing babies. They can't do any of that right now.
So, many of our initial podcasts will be interviews with candidates for local office. If you're a candidate and you're interested in being interviewed, and we haven't reached out to you yet, you can contact us through the Facebook page, MOV Public Forum, or by email at movpublicforum@gmail.com.
Today, we'll be interviewing Dave McCrady. Dave is a current city council member for District 1. District 1 is one of the two districts in Parkersburg that straddles the Little Canoa a bit. Most of his district is on the south side, but there's a tiny little segment on north end, I believe. No, I'm wrong. I am sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. No, I don't quite go to, I don't go to north end, Kim. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So, Dave's district is solely on the south side, and we're glad to have Dave with us today. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. I enjoy this. This is fun. We can't get out and knock on doors like we did the last time, that's for sure. My wife and I, we're out every night, and I would tell, geez, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out and hit like 8th Avenue. I'll spend, you know, do 8th, 9th, and 10th avenues all tonight. I might make it five houses. I just stop in a portion and talk to people. So, I don't, I'm gonna miss it. I do miss that part of it really. Hopefully, hopefully come November, it's different. We can do that again. If I'm there, I should say, well, I gotta go to primary first anyhow, yeah. But I did enjoy that, going and meeting people and talking with them.
Well, with that, let's dive right in. How do you introduce yourself as a candidate? If you, do you have an elevator speech? If we were in an elevator and you had to try to pitch me between floors, how would you persuade me to vote for you?
Wow. I really just, I have been a lifelong resident of South Parkersburg. And District 1, really, where I live now is two blocks from where I was born and raised at, really. And so, I haven't, you know, but we've been in and out, my wife and I have, and whatever, for a few years. But we have mainly lived here all of our lives. And we've got big roots here, our family's here. All of my family is, I've got three children, and all three of them live within two miles of us. And I have, I have my grandchildren, two of my grandchildren run up a street, well, two blocks from me. So, it's just, I enjoy South Parkersburg, and I enjoy the Erickson All Sports Facility, which I was very, very big in when it was being built.
So, what is motivating you to run for office again? What's the main thing that made you step up and decide to do this again?
I would like to, we had a really great start on stormwater. And I know stormwater's underground, and people do not see it, and they don't know a whole lot about it. They haven't been around a lot. They haven't heard a lot about it. But I talked with Adam Stoudt, our engineer, this morning about a new stormwater project that we just, guy's got a sinkhole in his backyard. And I'm the chairman of the Stormwater Committee, and he just wanted, we were just talking about it and stuff. And we, I asked him this morning, I said, how, how many feet do we, I said, I know it's over 300,000 feet of underground water lines we have in the city of Parkersburg. And we actually, and he said, no, we have 390,000 feet of stormwater lines, stuff you don't see. And Adam is very strong in a, I've got very, I come from a construction background. And so, I understand it, and I know that, I know this, and I really, really enjoy it. I like being back at work again with Adam, and I love it. And we've done some good things, some really good things, and then I hope we can do a lot more good things in the future.
What do you think is your wow factor? In other words, what do you think would make someone who hears about you and your candidacy say, "Wow, I'm gonna vote for him"?
It's the fact that I'm passionate about District 1. I really, there's a lot of things here at District 1 with the Erickson. We have some awfully good people, great people, and I'm just, I really wanna do what I can do for District 1. And I, I like it. I like the area. I've been here a long time.
So, if you're elected, what's the one thing that you really wanna accomplish while you're in office? Is there perhaps a city ordinance you wanna have eliminated or changed? Or a new city ordinance you'd like to see passed? Or is it something else you want to accomplish?
Well, as I was talking about stormwater, I'm really, you know, I love working in stormwater. And I, it's interesting, and it's fun to see what's going on in there. I would like for us to see us get a camera so we can even look into more where, we have a contract right now, way it's expired now with Pub, and they were, our Parkersburg Utility Board, and they were using their cameras for us. And they would, they would do a lot of television of our lines and stuff. And we've got, we've got some really, really bad problems. And hopefully, hopefully, I'd like to be part of, you know, helping Adam and working with Adam, you know, through those. As far as ordinance is concerned, you know, I, I think we have some good ordinance in City of Parkersburg. I would like somewhere down the road, I'd like to see us do for our trash people. I, I would like to see us do it like a Pelican-type can, you know, like you see in other places where the trucks just pull in, and they grab the can and dump it, you know, whatever, instead of having these guys having to use their backs and, you know, hurt. And that's, that's gotta be hard on those guys every day after throwing that trash bags up in their big trucks and stuff like that. So, I would like to see us go that way, you know, if we, I don't wanna take an ordinance or not, but I would like to see that happen.
How do you feel about compromise?
I think we all have to compromise, you know. Somewhere down the road, you're gonna, you know, you always run across it. Compromise is good, I think. You know, we went council meetings a lot of times, and, you know, if you're on the fence or something or whatever, you just gotta listen to everybody and see. And, and there's been times when you go into a council meeting, and you think, yeah, I'm definitely for this, or I might be on the fence or something like that, or I might be against or on the fence. And we have some great, great public forum people come in and talk and whatever. And, you know, so you could, they can change your mind. They really can in council, and they have, you know, when I've been there.
How well do you play with others? Can you give me an example?
I do very well with people. I have always, like I said, I've got a construction background, and I've done a lot of work, and I just, I don't have any trouble working with people, working for people, or being the boss of people. It just doesn't matter. You know, whatever role they want me to do, it's all accepted, that's for sure.
What do you think your worst enemy would say is your worst quality?
Wow. My worst quality, what he would think of, I, that's a tough one. Jennifer, really. It just, I guess it'd be my patience. I don't have a lot of patience when it comes to, comes to a lot of things. That'd probably be the worst thing. At least that's what my wife thinks. I don't have enough patience for it.
My kids would say that about me, I think. What do you think is your best quality?
Is to get the job done. I absolutely, once I'm on a task, or we test, you know, whenever it's just getting it done and getting it done right, and getting it done with a budget, under budget, and work on it, you know, really stay after it.
Political office holders are leaders. Can you describe your leadership style?
Well, as I said, I like, I can either lead it, or I can follow it, or however you wanna do it. Yeah, I like, I like it. I was always in supervision when I was at construction. And it was a challenge, a real challenge. And I enjoy getting out and, you know, making the decisions. Making a decision doesn't bother me at all. It really doesn't. And I like it, and, you know, I, I don't have any problem with that at all.
What are your personal core values?
Well, fame is always first. There's no doubt about that. And, you know, and our, oh, and it's just being truthful and honest with people about everything. I try to be. I really do. I don't try to, you know, put up smoke screens or anything. I just wanna be honest with people. It's hard sometimes, you know, with people when they call, and they want you to do something, and you know you just can't do it. It can't be done right now with the budget, the money and stuff like that. So, just honesty with people and being straightforward with them.
Do you know your win number?
One more than the person, the next person, I guess. Where would you be, you know? No idea. If I write it, I don't. Oh, I do. When I, when I was, when I ran in, what, 16 or 17, you know, 470, we started in 17. I won that by two votes. So, yeah, I guess two might be a good number.
A little margin of error there.
There you go. Yeah, just a little bit. It was five, then it went through the ballot challenge. The challenge ballot ended up being two votes, so whatever.
What do you think you will enjoy the least about continuing to serve if you're reelected?
Coming out of this COVID-19 is gonna be tough. It really is. And people, wow, you know, of course, our budget, City of Parkersburg, a little over $33 million. And when you take that budget, and you take this amount of time, we've lost so much business. I mean, it's just, the changes we're gonna have to make, and the cuts we're gonna have to make, you know, we just hope, hope, and I have not, absolutely have not talked with the, with the mayor or anybody about this yet, or anything else like that. No. We all know it's gonna be drastic. We really do. It just, it just trying to work through it, and getting the changes made is gonna be, need to be done. Not hopefully, never have to lay people off or cut her. We're just gonna have to watch our budget close, and it's gonna be a tough year. It really is. But I look forward to the challenge. I really do. I, I like it, and I enjoy it. I enjoyed City of Parkersburg. I really do.
What do you see as the main role of the city council in a government like Parkersburg that has a very strong mayor government?
You have to ask me at the beginning, Kim, but maybe I could read.
What do you see as the main role of the city council in a government like Parkersburg that has a very strong mayor government?
Our main role in, as a council, I think, is to support the mayor. You know, the mayor's the boss, and I was always with a company that I worked for all these years. You know, they said your number one job was protect your boss. And so, you know, we have to, as far as council, I know that, you know, we do a lot of things, you know, with the mayor or whatever. But we've got to help, and we've gotta support him. And, and I think, you know, we get along fine, and I think we do a good job of that. And I'm not saying we do it all the time, you know, because of course, there are some things that he wants to do that we kind of don't, but we still need to support the mayor, and I think we do a good job of that.
What excites you most about serving on city council?
Seeing the changes we're making. We've made some great changes. I love what we're doing with our parks. I love the splash pad. I think our splash pad is fantastic. It really is. If you, if you look at the changes in Point Park, and of course, we weren't part of the Point Park when it's in, but, you know, the changes we're making down there. And I think the big thing, the thing I am so looking forward to is bicycle trail going through there. It was gonna go up along the river up there, I think. My wife and I are passionate. We love to ride bicycles, and I can't wait till it gets done. I really can't. That's, that's gonna be a fun time. And if we could get something done with the workplace that are to tie into that, then we'll really have a good time down there, that's for sure.
Well, this may tie into what you just said, but as a citizen of Parkersburg, what are you most proud of about the city of Parkersburg?
Oh, well, I'm proud of our parks for sure. I think we, here lately, I think we brought the parks a long way. I, I do like, I think our city building now, with some of the buildings, we're getting torn down downtown. And now you can see our city building is really showing up. We just have a lot, a lot of good things. We got a lot of good restaurants downtown now, a lot of moving in and stuff, and choices. And I just, I just hope we keep going in the path we're going. I really do. I think we're heading in the right direction anyhow.
Tell us what political office accomplishment you're most proud of.
Oh, it probably is around stormwater and that, you know, just, it's what we're doing and what, you know, what I've been able to do. I'm also the chairman of the Public Works Committee in the stormwater. We kind of tie together. And just being around them, it's a construction base, basically, with what they are, and just, just the work that they're doing and how they're doing it. I think we, they've really been doing a great job here lately. And I'm just proud of how they're doing it, really. And I will honestly say, our new engineer, Adam Stoudt, is absolutely giving his team or doing a fantastic job with City of Parkersburg, really.
Tell us about the toughest issue you've had to handle as a council member, and describe how you handled it.
The toughest thing that went through your council was, when we first started, was the NDO ordinance. And that was, that was really tough. Nobody, nobody's against discrimination. We all know that. You know, nobody wants to discriminate, and I would, you know, but the way that ordinance was written, it just couldn't go. It couldn't happen. I know people say, well, you're, you know, why would you do that? It was, it's not that you're against discrimination, because absolutely not. I would never be that way. Gosh, we have great friends and everything else, but I would never, ever be against, never for discrimination. But the way that was written, it just could not, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I could, I could not vote for it. And I hated to say, I voted against it in some ways, because it feels like I don't want anybody ever think I was, I was not for discrimination, but I would never, never discriminate against anybody. So, that was my toughest thing.
How do you see the job of city council members changing in the post-COVID-19 world?
I think we're gonna have to be a lot more compromising. As we talked a little while ago, we're gonna have to compromise a lot of things. And I know there are some things that each council person is passionate about. We all have different things that we're, you know, that we're after. It's gonna take a lot of compromise to, to give and take and come out of this. When speaking terms, maybe, it's gonna be a good one, and a tough one. And I think that we're gonna have to really buckle down to do it.
Well, with that, you've gone through the gauntlet. We're gonna move into the hot button, hot seat issues. One or both of us often have been present at nearly every single city council meeting since the current council was sworn in.
Jennifer, I've seen you every time.
I'm there all the time. I'm there almost as much as you are.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure.
We've noticed that a lot of the council, what the council does is routine, and so, people don't really get involved or interested in it. But we've also noticed that a lot of the issues that come up in council aren't controversial and have either been dealt with in committee, or just aren't controversial and are resolved by unanimous or close to unanimous vote.
But there have been several hot button issues that came up that brought forth a lot of public comment and controversy, and that divided the council. So, most of those issues have been resolved for the moment, but they can always crop back up. So, we wanna take you through those and get a quick take on them from you.
All right.
So, for this purpose, we'll use the support, not support, or support with changes format. Here we go. Non-discrimination ordinance.
I think we talked about that. I absolutely support it, but it has to be changed. It really does.
Motorized bicycle ban.
I don't think we should ever ban the motorized bicycle, because we definitely do need to revise them, okay?
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
We've already done it for fire and police protection. Trash is gonna be a tough one. I like that, if we do the Pelican or something like that. There's a lot of cities now have a trash fees, and I don't know yet. And, and I would, right now, I would not support raising those anyway. I think we need to, I would not raise any of the fees, no.
Financial support for Parkersburg homecoming and other civic events.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we do that, and I think we do a good job with that. We really do.
A fireworks ban.
Yeah. We don't, we don't need to ban the fireworks. Kids have too much fun with them. Some adults too. I shouldn't say. Yeah, okay. They get a little loud around 4th of July, as we all know, or whatever. But an outright ban, a little, I don't, I would, I would hate to see us try to go that way. It's just, I think it's unenforceable, to tell you the truth, honestly.
Splash pad project.
Do I support it? I absolutely support it, for sure. And I think when people see the new changes, if we're, I have not talked with the mayor. I don't know yet about what we're gonna do with our pools this year. That has not been decided yet. And if it has, I have not been part of any of that or whatever. But we're adding a slide to the City Park Pool this year, and I think people will really, really enjoy that. And we'll throw this, I'll just throw this out. Well, we started in 2016, the year that we were elected. I was elected to city council. City Park Pool, daily attendance was 14 kids or 14 people in the pool. That's what the day, that's where it was at. Last year with Splash Pad, we ran up to plenty, plenty of days. There was over 300-plus people in that pool. So, there was a lot of changes. A lot of people are using it. Southwood this year has a, has a ramp that's been added to it this year, which it's a zero-entry ramp, just like the one that's in City Park, you know, whatever. Instead of having to climb up a ladder, like was the only way to get, you know, out of the pool, now the elderly people can use it, and they can walk out of it with a ramp, with rails. And, and we're really looking forward to that. I mean, I love what we're doing with our pools.
A social media or code of conduct policy?
Jennifer, I've heard this from you a time or two, haven't I?
Just once or twice.
I kind of remind me, the old song is, there's, there's a wood, bad apple spoil a whole bunch. I, even Joe Sater, we've talked about it. We really have. And like Joe said, you know, like, you can't do it to elected officials. And I don't think we have a problem with it. I really don't. One person kind of stretches it to extremes sometimes. And I think, you know, we tried to, as a group, tried to help that matter out, but it just, it just wasn't too big. And we'll see what happens here.
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
I like it. I really like it, because you don't see the couches and the old mattresses and stuff laying around. There's tires thrown out. Yes, I like that.
Residential property cleanup.
What, we do that. We do a bunch of that right now. Was talking to the mayor this morning, we're over 300 yards we're mowing this year. That's for the city, you know, we have to take care of just abandoned properties. And, and it's just, you know, the houses and stuff, where we're trying to demolish and stuff that we do. That's a lot, a lot of yards, a lot of properties, 300-plus this year. But we have to do it. We absolutely have to do it for the neighborhoods.
Yeah. Well, with that, we'll move to the wildcard section, and these are softball questions. They should be probably the easiest. If you had to, name one favorite thing or place in our city.
Ooh, that's a, that's a tough, that's tough, because my wife and I have our grandkids at the City Park a lot. And plus, we have the Point Park a lot, because we love to go to Point Park in the evening, you know, down to our sunset, across the High River. It's beautiful. The kids, the kids just run and play and have a great time. So, that'd be a toss-up for me between those two places.
What are you personally passionate about?
Wow. Personally, it's my family, of course, is all here, and, and about City of Parkersburg. I really, really work hard for the city, and I work hard for District 1, and I, I enjoy it. I enjoy, I meet a lot of people. And hopefully, hopefully, I can, they feel the same way about me.
What do you do in your off time?
Wow. Play a lot of golf. Of course, according to my wife, I play a lot of golf. I don't think I play enough, and she thinks I play too much. Just family time with the kids, with the grandkids, and do a lot of metal detecting. Love to do metal detecting. That's a lot of fun. And just, just good time with, with people and friends and stuff.
What do you feel is most unique about you?
Most unique about me? Just my, I don't know. I care for City of Parkersburg, and I care for the Erickson All Sports Facility. It's in my district, you know. I was, I was on the original steering committee when, when you, when that was the first concept, thinking about doing it with John Flint and Tim Swor, were the athletic director and the principal up there. And it's seeing it from the, from the concept of it now to where it is now. It's just fantastic. And I really love it, love it.
Well, we've come to the end, so we'd like to give you a few minutes to tell us and the voters, anything that you feel we've missed or that we need to know, including how to get in contact with you to find more information on your campaign, how to donate, get involved, et cetera.
Well, I just, you can always call me. My number is published. It's published with the City of Parkersburg. And I like it when people call me for the district. I, I do not have any social media. My wife has a Facebook, we're both involved in, but I do not do any political, anything political on it. Ever now, I'll send a picture, and it has a picture of something we've done with the city or whatever, say, say what we've done. But it's not a political, you know, platform anyway, in any way. And, you know, I, I just, I don't take, I have never taken donations for it, and I don't, you know, I'm fine, you know, or whatever. We enjoy it, have a good time. My wife and I do a lot of it. And, but I'm sure, sure, go, you call me, you got a problem or whatever, I'll be glad to be there. Be your front portion. We'll sit down and we'll talk about it.
From six feet away.
Yep, absolutely. Our social distancing, we have to keep that, and wear your mask. My wife keeps plenty of decor for us, and we go places and stuff like that if we're, if we're out of it. And you just have to these days. Hopefully, that'll be over before long.
We appreciate you taking the time to get with us and do this video podcast, and we appreciate what you, the work you've done for the city over the past several years. And we hope you stay, stay, say, stay safe as well. Everybody wash those hands.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Jennifer, thank you very much, and Kim, I appreciate it. I really do. It's just a good platform, and I like it. I've enjoyed it. Had a good, good evening here, and, and thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, really.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay. Okay. Y'all take care, okay?